Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Cedar Falls Board of Education with a reminder that the actions taken this evening around this table will focus on our students and their achievement. With that, moving on to item B on the agenda, public hearing. I have in my possession an affidavit of publication showing that the notice of time and place of hearing for the Cedar Falls High School Portable Project. This notice was published in the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier on January 25th, 2018. The board will now hold a hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding this subject? If so, please come to the mic. Mr. Wykoff?
Okay, Larry Wykoff, 4241 East Park Road, the great city of Cedar Falls. Kind of just like to set the stage here a little bit. Previously, the school board of Cedar Falls has paid a million dollars for land to use for potentially building a new high school out by the UNI. So, that block is started. Now, another event is set in motion. Let's put some portable classrooms up there that are going to not be used at Southdale. And my first question was, after reading this twice, what is going to be taught in those two schoolrooms? I haven't seen anything in the public announcements of what class is going to be taught, just that we're, we have to move two classrooms up there to improve the classroom edification of our students. I know I'm not going to get an answer probably, but I'd like to know why that wasn't put in the paper. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wykoff. Moving on to item C, on the, anybody else that would like to speak in regards to this subject? If not, the public hearing is closed. Thank you. Moving on to item C, the consent agenda. Want you all to know that Jenny Lieper did review the bills. She's unable to attend this evening. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Suzie Hines. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Eric Giddens. Any discussion, questions, or comments regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on now to public comment, we have two individuals that would like to speak before us today. Margaret Prophet, would you like to come before? And we'd love to visit with you.
Well, thank you for having me. I'd like to thank the board for passing the resolution regarding the proposed legislative changes to Iowa school funding. Your resolution prompted me to look into the school choice and voucher issue. It is clear that our state legislature's attempt to alter education funding will harm our community public schools. By any measure, Iowa's public schools are successful. Obviously, we strive for improvement, but district-specific problems will not be solved by the wholesale and expensive school choice proposals. I support a local approach to our educational needs. Let's garner common sense, professional resources to identify and repair any structural district problems that face our schools. Public schools anchor our communities. Let's keep them strong. The ill-fitted choice proposals were brought in from outside of our state by ideological and hyper-religious organizations. Cedar Falls is not looking for mandates from misinformed outsiders. Iowa's legislators, including our own Walt Rogers, should know that. Thank you for standing up for our local schools.
Thank you very much. The second person speaking tonight will be Jennifer Christensen.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Jennifer Christensen, and I'm here today to also thank you for taking action after January 8th's board meeting in which I had public comment. Thank you for officially passing a resolution stating your firm opposition of the current bill, Senate File 2091, that Walt Rogers has brought forth through Iowa Legislature. Since speaking with you in January, I've read everything I can on the subject of school vouchers and educational spending accounts. Before I continue, I'd like to say that to me, this issue is truly nonpartisan. This is an issue regarding properly funding our Iowa public schools and supporting Iowa's future citizens to stay in our state. Parents for Great Iowa Schools gathered on January 16th and inspired me, my neighbors, and my friends to start a letter-writing campaign. Thank you to those of you that I saw there at that very effort, grassroots effort. Many of us parents are committed to having a voice in this legislative session, and I have felt very motivated by your resolution and this involvement. On January 27th, two subject matter experts shared their research on the pros and cons of the voucher system and ESAs, and it was eye-opening and frightening. I was not aware, for instance, that $50 million of our tax money already goes to supporting private and home schools in Iowa. We already have school choice in Iowa, so that rationale for this bill did not seem valid either, nor is the state, the statement that the bill is ultimately fiscally neutral. This is false, and I'm angered on behalf of citizens that are sponsoring this bill to try to pull the wool over our eyes. This bill will filter money away from our Iowa public schools that educate 96% of our Iowa students, and I agree with Margaret that education is so critical to our future, to our local and statewide economic development, and I'm hopeful that all Iowa school districts and city governments will take a stand on issues like school choice that will weaken Iowa's public schools and challenge our economic future. This past Saturday, the League of Women Voters sponsored a legislative forum on education at the Central Rivers AEA offices here in Cedar Falls, and not one person who's sponsoring, not one of the bills sponsoring elected officials attended to answer our questions. That too disappointed me greatly. I expect those in the public office to back their bill face-to-face with their citizens when given a chance. Lastly, I have nothing against people who choose private schools or choose to homeschool their children. I simply want Iowa to raise our bar and become the best again in publicly educating our children. Thank you for joining us, parents, in fighting for this goal in our state. For anyone watching this broadcast, it's my hope that you will write to our legislators voicing your opposition to this bill and supporting Iowa's public education. Thanks again for your proactive initiative. As a parent of our students educated in Cedar Falls schools, I applaud your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to communications, thank you both ladies for being here this evening. Student Representative Arlo.
So, I'm excited to report that Student Senate's first winter dance, the Snowball, was very successful. We had a great turnout, and I think everyone who attended had a great time. And now, I'm kind of here to speak and promote an event that I'm very excited about, which is our reinvented high school dance marathon that is coming up on Saturday, February 24th, from 1:00 to 4:00. And for the first time, we are opening this event to all of our, everyone in the community, but specifically our elementary schoolers, and so we're really trying to get this event out there, and hopefully, a lot of them will come. And we have a lot going on during that day, so we'll have dancing through the entire time, there'll be concessions sold, but we'll also have lots of games and activities. So, we'll have carnival-style games, like mini golf and ring tosses, and a fishing booth, and we'll also have Nine Square, which is like Four Square but bigger, and Glow-in-the-Dark Hide-and-Seek in the basement of the school, which is very fun. And we have both an elementary and a junior high high school dodgeball tournament, and this event is only $5 for one person, or $10 for a family, and all the proceeds from this event will go to the University of Iowa Children's Hospital. So, once again, this is Saturday, February 24th, from 1:00 to 4:00, and that's in the high school gym, and it should be a great event. So, I'd really encourage anyone in the community who's at all interested to come, and yeah, thank you so much. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Arlo? So, when you do your hide-and-seek, is it going to be down in the cafeteria?
It's in that locker room basement area, two basements, but, so it's in that one, under the gym, and there's kind of glow sticks everywhere, and it's a lot of fun.
Okay, all right. It could be, it would be a fun, it could, it is, it will be a fun event, but it could be scary, is what I was going to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Arlo.
All right, to Nell.
Yeah, good evening. Okay, I have another great report this evening to share with all of you, the communications update for the district. We'll start out there, an adorable photo of a little gentleman who's celebrating his 100th day of school, which happened just last week. First, I wanted to offer congratulations to our boys swimming, sophomore Dylan Moffett. He's actually a student at Independence, but he, because of our sharing agreement, comes to Cedar Falls for swimming. So, he was state champion for a second time in the 500 freestyle, and then the team finished 12th, the team finished 12th, so congratulations to them. Also, big excitement for our wrestling team. They qualified six wrestlers for the state tournament, placed second in the team standings, and that is quite an amazing improvement for that wrestling team over last year especially. So, very exciting for them, and that state tournament is coming up. And this was a photo of the Carnivorous Rabbits, that is the name. This is the Holmes and Pete Robotics Team. They competed in Davenport at super regionals, and they actually advanced to state as well. So, congratulations to them. Again, that's a joint team from both Pete and Holmes. And then, just wanted to give a quick thanks to those of you that were advocating in Des Moines for the district. Many of you that are here tonight were there as well, so just wanted to do a quick thank you to you, and then just also let the community know that we're definitely doing all we can in Des Moines to advocate for our schools. It was National School Counseling Week last week, and I can't say enough about the school counselors we have in our district across the board, PK-12, but this is our Holmes counselors there on the left, and then a couple, three of our four high school counselors there on the right. I was lucky enough to go and kind of observe some of the things that they were doing in the classrooms last week to try to do some promotion with them, and I definitely realized, well, they're busy enough, they're not going to be tweeting much on their own, so I was trying to get some, they were doing a lot of classroom visits with sixth graders going into seventh, ninth, going into 10th, so it's a really busy time for them, but they were able to take a little bit of time out of the day to give me some smiles there. This is a really exciting project. The instructional coaches are doing a TEDx Cedar Falls with some of the students. This was actually out in North Cedar, and they were doing a TEDx talks on dangerous diseases. There's actually a TEDx program where you can develop your own within your school district, and this has kind of developed on that concept and using the green screen there. The Cedar Valley Leadership Institute, which is part of the Greater Cedar Valley Alliance and Chamber, they have an education-focused day every year, and which was held this last Wednesday. Dr. Petit and then some of our instructional coaches, Brian Enru, went and presented to this group of community leaders, and they did a great job of showcasing all the things happening in our district. Brian talked about the four Cs, which we mentioned a lot in regards to importance with our students, and then Kenton Ingles talked about instructional coaches and using technology. There were some great questions and really great discussion that happened at that session. Again, this is just real quick, the 100th day of school was celebrated last week. It's actually a teacher from Hanson there on the right. So, there was a lot of fun, a lot of dressing up, and a lot of just neat activities that happened throughout the district. Not celebrated so much at the secondary level, but elementary is a lot of fun. Our Jazz One had a great honor. They were selected as the 2018 Performing Jazz Band for the Iowa Band Masters Association under the direction of Mr. Cal Engelhardt, and it's really one of the highest honors that can be awarded in the state of Iowa. So, you have to actually apply to be chosen, and they literally just choose one jazz band with, one band within each of the categories. So, congratulations to the Jazz One. And I just, real quick, to those watching, the Gold Star is taking nominations right now until February 20th, so you can just go to their website, and then please, if you have a teacher you think's made a great impact on your students or you yourself, you can definitely make a nomination for a Gold Star Award. And this is another big thank you. We have lots of thank yous tonight, but this is actually the Tiger Booster Club membership list for 2017, 2018. So, all of these businesses and individuals have financially supported the Booster Club this year, so we just wanted to give a quick thank you to all of them and all they do to support the many activities that happen within our district for our students. And I'm sure they can go to the Facebook page or website if they, anyone wanted to jump onto that list, you can still get on this year. And so, Valentine's is this week, and I'm sure some of you may be looking for something to do, possibly. The Sword Dogs are actually having, it's our robotics team at the high school, they're having a fundraiser on Valentine's Day to support their team, raise some dollars, and they will actually be there making the ice cream from 6:00 to 9:00, and then a portion of the proceeds and then any tips will support them as well. So, if you need something to do, mark your calendar for Valentine's. And then, we're going to talk a little bit about Insight Week that happened up at the high school a couple weeks ago. I've gotten to do many great things in my position here in the district, but this is probably and definitely in the top three of getting to be a part of this process. So, this happened up at the high school. Throughout the four days, we ended up working with over 250 students, staff, community parents, even industry leaders, and the focus was really on the future of education in our district. And then, talking with all of those diverse groups about their opinions, their thoughts, and then that's going to develop into some three or four design drivers, as they call it, that will shape the work as we move forward. So, first on the left, there is actually a group of high school students, current high school students, they were CAPS associates in the fall, giving a tour of the current high school. And then, on the right is David Jakes, who kind of led the process, and that was the dinner that we had many community members that were a part of. And I think some of the most, this was the community members as well from that evening. I think some of the most exciting thing that I was able to be involved with and saw was the students and the session that they had. They really took kind of a deep look into education and facilities and furniture and their ideas and how things work and what they would want, what doesn't work. And I'm not sure you could, you can't quite see the excitement, but I tried to capture it in some of the photos, but the intense thinking, and we're, you know, you kind of wonder, high school students, are they going to get as involved in it? Are they going to really express their opinions and thoughts? And there was just no question. They very quickly understood what questions were being asked and really wanted to get to some really interesting and innovative answers. So, there, they're looking at some of the different things that, so to speak, that they consider part of learning. There's more students there that are working on it. And then, they were also tasked with then designing a high school themselves. And this was really interesting, because as you can see, the one on the left there was actually, they thought of the idea of developing into like a pizza, so there's really kind of a central area, but then everything kind of has its own offshoot. In each of those gears, you can see those different colors or different parts of what a building would be or what you would need to have within a building. Like, you need to have a cafeteria, you need to have a library, you need to have a music area, and it was just really interesting and very, very engaged conversation with these students for them developing a high school, what it could, what it could look like and what it could be. We also had sessions with administrators and teachers. These are the teachers at the high school that were looking at some different photos of different possibilities, other places of facilities that are used. So, the administrators doing some of the same kind of, you can see some Legos there on the left, there was even an activity with Legos and what kind of learner each person was, and then this was one of the community member sessions that was held on the final day. I don't know, Andy, if you have anything you wanted to add?
No, really, as we, as Janelle said, it was called Insight Week, and it was really insightful on what does education look like, what does the future of learning look like? And I think the feedback was tremendous as we look at how do we best serve our students' needs, our community needs, as we look at the next five years, 10 years, 50 years as a vision. And we can't thank everybody enough for every, for coming out and taking part within that week.
And this is just the very, very beginning of what will become a longer process of engagement of the community, of engagement of our students, of our parents, of our community members. So, it's just really the very, very beginning. There'll be much more conversation about it, and definitely here at the board table, and then also within the community. So, once again, quick shout-out for our social media channels. And any questions for me?
Any questions for Janelle? Thank you, Janelle.
Janelle, I would ask if you would move the cord that's hanging over, thank you.
You want us?
Just as a communication piece as well, we always kind of reserve this time for any questions or comments potentially that come from public comments or public hearings, and I think at the public hearing, we had a comment about regarding the high school portable, and there was a question that came up last board meeting that we answered, that we are going through registration here over the course of the next several weeks. We know we have a need, we know we have space constraints, and certainly have some classrooms right now in the high school that aren't in classroom spaces. We have them condensed into all sorts of different areas. This building will be used, we just don't know exactly, we can't state specifically what course is going to be or what classes will be in the portable, because that's going to be determined through registration. Anybody that has gone through high school, has students within the high school, knows that our registration numbers vary greatly, that you might have 12 sections of one course one semester, the next semester you might actually have eight sections of that course. So, we know there's a need, just the sheer number of students and the growing population that we have, plus the number of classrooms that we need to serve that population of students. So, we just can't state specifically what that, those two rooms will be used for.
As far as the class sizes of the 12th grade that's graduating and the 9th grade that'll be coming up to the high school, is there, is there much difference between those two overall sizes?
I don't have those numbers in front of me. We talked about the 6th grade going into 7th grade, and there's definite numbers there. Our graduating classes typically have been a lot smaller than our elementary classes. Our largest classes right now are at the elementary, you know, 450, 460 students. Typically, we're looking at, last year's graduating class was about 380 students. This year is, I think, right in that same range roughly. So, we know that those, as those classes matriculate through the system, there's going to be more students in the high school in the secondary.
Thank you. Okay, moving on then to item F on the agenda, approve the planned specifications and set a public hearing for the elementary furniture.
And I would like to introduce Dan and Andrea from Structure Architects, and they will walk us through the upcoming furniture RFP for our three elementary projects.
Thank you. Welcome.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity. What we're going to do here tonight is just kind of give you a real high-level review of the plans and some of the various specific areas, show you what those plans look like. Andrea will discuss some of the furniture and show you pictures of what those styles look like that we may well be using, and these are all plans that have been worked through with Pam and the building principals. So, Andrea, take it away.
Okay, thank you. So, like I said, or like Dan said, we're just going to take a look at each of the three schools. First off, at a overall view, and then we're going to, I'm going to show you some smaller areas that are kind of similar throughout spaces. So, this first slide is Aldridge Elementary. So, you just kind of see the overall floor plan there, and you're seeing all the furniture that's laid out within that space, so basically, you know, everything in the school is getting new furniture. From there, we're moving into what we call the heart of the school and the curiosity or media center. So, here, and then on the bottom half, you're also seeing the art and the maker space. So, you're seeing just some floor plan views of what some furniture, how things are laid out. In the heart area, there's some lounge furniture that's flexible, seating for many different uses, and then in the curiosity center, there's a lot of bookshelves in the center and a little bit of lounge furniture, some classroom area for that. In the next one is a 4th grade learning community at Aldridge, and this is giving you a demonstration of the types of furniture that you're seeing in these learning studios. So, we have a flexible learning with different shapes of desks and tables that fit together with one another to form different shapes, to be collaborative and flexible for the students. We also have some seminar and small group areas, and then each grade level also has a common space that has some flexible furniture for collaborating out in those areas if all the classes want to come out in those spaces, including lounge furniture and tables and chairs. The next slide is just giving you an overview of the pre-K and kindergarten learning community. A little more traditional from the standpoint of tables and chairs for those grade levels, and then they also have their central common space as well. This next one is Orchard Hill Elementary, so again, this is the overview of the plan. Again, you can see where the furniture is kind of laid out, and then other areas that are not being touched there. And again, kind of similar to Aldridge, this is the 5th and 6th grade learning community at Orchard Hill. We've got three, three classrooms of 5th and 6th grade around a central common space, kind of the same concept, some of the, a lot of the same furniture is being used between these two schools, the same type of styles to offer that flexibility to the students. This is the commons and the media center area. Up to the left-hand side is the media center that is having some renovation. We're reusing some bookshelves in there, but then also adding some mobile bookshelves in the middle, again, a classroom space and a small kind of lounge or reading nook area. In the commons area over on the right-hand side and down to the left, or bottom right, is the art and maker space. Again, same kind of concept as the heart for Aldridge. North Cedar, this is the overall floor plan there. Much of the school is getting new furniture as well. The east wing has been recently updated with new finishes in furniture within the last several years, so that is not at this time. But North Cedar, this is the south addition with some classrooms and common space, the media center as well. This is down the east wing, just, this is just showing you, currently, this is a classroom that is being reconvened or remodeled into the commons and some small group spaces for that east wing and those classrooms down that, down that side. And then, these are just some photos of furniture. Mind you, this is not by any means the finishes, the fabrics, but that you will see, these are just images, and there are different options for that that we're specifying, but kind of gives you a brief overview of what some of the things that you could see in the heart and curiosity or media centers. So, some lounge furniture, some soft seating, flexible furnishings that are, like the little ottoman stools are easy to move, mobile bookcases and tables. This is the learning studios, so some different shaped desks, like I talked about, different styles of chairs and stools, some tables and mobile bookcases. Again, some of the same images that you saw before, but some of the commons and collaborative spaces that you find within those learning communities. So, again, some of the lounge furniture, some different types of chairs, really to provide a variety for students when they're in their classrooms and coming out into those spaces to have some flexibility and some difference in furniture. The PLCs are for the, where the teachers are having their offices per se, and then some instructional desks and chairs for their classrooms as well. And then, this is just a brief overview of some of the budget numbers and where we are best estimating those numbers to come in. This is, is an estimate, and when this goes out to bid, we'll have exact numbers then. And Dan's going to talk a little bit about the process.
So, really, the way this works is it's, it's no different than any of our other projects when we put them out to bid. We have a basis of bid, which, again, Andrea has worked out with Pam and the principals. Then, in some areas, like for file cabinets and the like, we might have equals listed Then in some areas, like for file cabinets and the like, we might have equals listed right away. But then we also have the ability to go through an approval process where other people can come in and ask for their product to be approved as, as an alternate, I believe, in this case. So that we have a chance to come back after the fact and look at everything and make sure that they are in fact complying with the basis of the design. So, let's see. So bid date is scheduled for February 28th. And then I believe March 7th is when the board is going to act on that. Reason for the length of that is so that Andrea has the ability to look at some of these, at the numbers and the different products and make sure that everything's on an equal footing there. So with that, any questions?
Couple of points. You know, a lot of times when we work through projects or committees, we'll say, we have spent hours on this and this has probably been, we have spent days on this.
Weeks.
Weeks, maybe, just, and when you say, well, we're going to start selecting furniture for spaces and within the building, there are so many conversations, different subcommittees and committees and input and dialogue and testing out furniture in different buildings to see what was, what resonated with students and what did they like and most comfortable in. There's just a lot of work involved with this. And we know that this is paid for through a combination of PEPAL funds as well as some funds through our building level instructional support budgets. And certainly, this was anticipated through all the bonding, all the different components as far as what the cost would be. Aldridge is higher than what we anticipated when we went through the bond two years ago now. But again, we've added seven classroom spaces to Aldridge, which helps increase the cost for furniture. We had a lot of debate, do we, do we not purchase furniture for those seven classrooms from day one? But then we also know how quickly things can cease in manufacturing or all of a sudden you have completely different fabrics or different designs and they just don't seem like a natural fit. We know we have the funding in place and certainly the budgetary capacity and it makes sense to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have an emotion to approve the, the plan specifications and set a public hearing for the elementary furniture?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School Board, or School District Board of Education approved the plan specifications in form of contract and set February 26, 2018 at 5:30 PM as the date and time to hold a public hearing for the 2018 elementary furniture project.
Thank you, Eric. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Yes, Jeff.
Yeah. Dan, can you just, and I think you captured, they captured this, but maybe just to explain one of the things, obviously with furniture, you can, you can quickly get yourself down into where there's like one manufacturer that can, and obviously that's something the manufacturers try and often do is ensure that their RFP is, you know, to them so it gives them some kind of price advantage. And I think you alluded that to a little bit about alternatives, but just trying to be as open as possible so we can, from price sensitive and then, are, is this, we have, we're buying a lot of furniture. Is this going to be just one single manufacturer that, that for, or one representative, it's winner takes all on the entire RFP? Or, or do you see that where, you know, hey, we really like these desks from these and we like, you know, the chairs from, from this company? I guess, just, I mean, and you've, you've put days into this, so I'm sure you have some background, but just, I mean, just to educate.
We'll let Andrea answer.
Educate, educate everyone, you know, how, how we're going to make sure we can get the best price and combination here.
Absolutely. Well, obviously, it is a public bid, so anyone is welcome to bid on it. All dealers are open to see that from that standpoint. Also, like we said, we put a basis of bid into it from the front and that was, you know, kind of determined from kind of what Andy had alluded to. We did some test furniture in some classrooms, really decided what we liked. From there though, anyone is welcome, any manufacturer is welcome to submit alternates, whether that is something that they are going to submit a custom design for to meet the criteria of what we have put in the basis of bid or whether it is something that they already have in their manufactured line. But from the standpoint of numbers of manufacturers, it is not one manufacturer that is being specified, it is, oh gosh, I don't know, several, I would say, maybe a board of 10. So that's from different, you know, chair to storage to office, all of those different kinds of things that go into the school to make it what it is. Let's see, what was I going to? Oh yes, so then when it, when it is bid out, it will also be awarded to multiple contractors or multiple furniture dealerships. And how that is done is typically by, we will break things out by seating, by kind of category of furniture first, and then within that is also manufacturers. So within, let's say seating, we might have four different manufacturers, I'm just throwing a number out. We might have four different manufacturers of seating, that could be four different furniture dealers that are awarded that based on their low bids. So then from that perspective, the low bids are put together and then you might have, you know, three or four, you know, you just don't know how many people are going to bid the project either. Dealerships that will be awarded and be there to install and warrant the furniture. Does that answer that question?
Yeah, it gives insight into, I mean, it's a, I understand it's a moving target and you're going to be faced with dilemmas of, well, this is what I specified, you know, this one's 20% cheaper, it's a little bit different, how much different? Is it 20% different or not?
Yep. And then, and some of that will come back to, I think, the, the work that the district and the teachers and the students put into what kind of things they liked the best and, you know, some of that was the flexible furniture that kind of fits and melds together with one another too. So it'll all come back to some of those criteria that we were put in the front.
And?
We want the best possible furniture for the least amount of price.
Yep.
And be efficient and effective and allow multiple bidders to be able to have access to this, this project. And certainly, that's been the scope and the process has gone through this for the last multiple months.
And I'd be remiss without thanking Pam, the building principals, the three building principals involved, and all the teaching staff and all the students that were involved with this. I don't know who had more fun, the building principals or the teachers for trying the new stuff out in their classrooms or the kids. But it was a very eye-opening experience, I think, for everybody that was involved with it. And we're very much looking forward to receiving the bids and I want to just thank everybody for all the time they put into it because it was a, a great collaborative effort, I believe.
Thank you to your entire team. Any other questions? Hearing ended, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're moving on to item G, approve the plan specifications and set a public hearing for Hanson Elementary Water Main Project.
Okay, and I would like to introduce Mike Broke from Modus Engineering and Aaron?
Yeah.
Okay. And they're going to walk through the replacement of the domestic water line to Hanson Elementary.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
I know it's not as fun as furniture, but it's very important. If you don't have water, you do not have school. We're here today to talk about an upgrade to the water main at Hanson Elementary. It's to replace the original water main and we're here to kind of give you an idea of where, what that, what that means. If we can get to the plan, there we go, thank you. As you well know, this school has had a couple of different remodelings and we tried to color-coded this just to explain this a little bit. Red is new, represents what we're proposing to be replacing or this project and yellow has been replaced under previous projects. So as Aaron, yeah, that one right there, there's a section of, of water main that was replaced when we did the five-classroom project that was done probably, probably three or four years ago. And then we did the major north addition and during that time, that line got replaced. That's mainly serving fire hydrants is where Aaron is showing, displaying that. So what still remains is that, that straight shot from 4th Street all the way down to the south and there's a fire hydrant that it ends right there. And so that's, that's all original. Another bit of information is what's shaded in the upper north part, that's still part of, that's the city park right there. And Aaron and I have been talking with the city to understand that a little bit better and to do some coordination on our installation. And so what we're proposing to do is to do directional boring in that area, well, actually through the whole section, just to minimize the disturbance of the soil. And right where it's at, there's a berm, if you're familiar with that area, there's a bermed area. And so we had dialogue between Mark Ripponer and he, you know, both said that would be the ideal spot and it's approximately the existing, the location of the existing water Yeah, so, yeah, that's about, that's about it. I mean, it's, we got, we got one con, we got one trade, okay? So there's no multiple trades, it's just a mechanical contractor involved. We've talked to a few contractors that are experts in the area. We feel that the budget is ranging between 130 and 150. And because of that range, as you get closer to the school, towards that south hydrant, there are some existing concrete, there's a basketball court down there and so there are some concrete work, there's some existing utilities that could be, may need to be included to do some repairs. So that, that may increase that cost. So it's, that's why we have that range on there. As far as schedule goes, we do have a long schedule. The bids aren't due until March 20th, but we felt that that's, that's okay because this work will not be done until summer occurs. And there's also a 4th Street project that the city is also repairing, trying to replace that street. So we have been talking to them to making sure that this work is coordinated with their work. And they're actually proposing to replace a section of the new water main line to the south of 4th Street so we don't actually have to tear up 4th Street for this project. So hopefully that'll, that'll be beneficial to both parties on that. So that's, that's important there as well.
So history on this, this was part of our 10-year physical plant and equipment expenditure plan. It was scheduled, or at least tentatively, we thought it was going to be done last summer, but for good reason, the city moved some of the work on 4th Street. They, they decided to do some of the eastern part of 4th Street before this section of 4th Street. So we wanted to take advantage of economies of scale and do the water main at the same time the, the road was being reconstructed. So we know that this is going to be beneficial, so we don't have to do some road repair and road reconstruction. This was not on our physical plant and equipment levy 10-year plan four years ago until the water main broke three years ago and is in dire need of repair. So I don't know if everybody remembers, but we did lose a day of instruction at Hanson two years ago when the water main broke and we did not have water. Luckily, we were able to get repairs done to that water main, but those are repairs certainly along the entire line that won't be for longevity or for perpetuity. So this is one of those aspects where you don't see it, but it's something that's extremely important, as Mike said.
And it's not the first time that we've had a water main issue at Hanson, it's just that we've been a little fortunate in timing when those, those breaks have taken place and we've been able to take care, take care of them on non-school days.
Thank you.
Question real quick, what's the total distance of that?
It's about 900 feet approximately.
Okay.
On the street all the way to.
All the way to the hydrant.
Fire hydrant.
Okay.
Will all of the project take place during the summer when classes are not in session?
Yes. Yeah, and we've been coordinating with Rick and as well Doug, because I believe there's going to be some school activities in this facility. And so just obviously downtime, there, there would be downtime even with the main going in 4th Street from the city as well. So we're trying, we're working through that, so there may be multiple days, but definitely coordinate that with any activities.
Yeah, we've had multiple conversations already. Park and Rec will be using Hanson and Holmes again this summer as they have in the past. We have a traffic issue this summer because the intersection with Holmes Drive and 4th Street is going to be tore up during the summer, so we're working with the city engineering on that as well. But Park and Rec is aware that there may be a day or two or three, that there may not be any water in the building, but we'll know that in advance and everybody's just going to adjust. So everybody's been real collaborative in that whole effort and understands the situation.
I think what we, the opportunity that we do have is, is that we can, potentially we can install the new line parallel with the existing line. So we're not disrupting it and only when we do the tie-ins. So that, so that's where maybe a day here, day there, doing that coordination with that activity, it will, it won't be a, hopefully a hindrance either on contractor side or a school activity side.
Is there a, a financial incentive to doing this at this time? Do you have any sense of what sort of financial savings we might garner for doing it at this time or would there be?
Yeah, Jeff, we, before we, when there was the, the break two years ago, we weren't necessarily, we didn't know, maybe we needed to get this done before the road happens, okay? And so we have estimated around $10, $10,000 worth of savings that we didn't have to replace this, that section of pipe and the street repair that's, that's going to be done through the city.
Mike, is directional boring more expensive than taking a backhoe and making a hole?
You know what? In this case, no. It's because there's birmingham going on, there's trees that are in that area and so we, we have to go down, you know, six feet, but it's, it's bermed, so we, we have to be consideration of that as well. And there's also a hill going up to that elementary school as well. So we left it, we, how we left it was in the park area, that north section, we left that that needs to be directional bored. To the south of that, we have given option for the contractors to do normal trenching if that, if that deems to be less expensive. But based on our evaluation and talking to a couple of different contractors, they both feel that in this pro, in this case, the directional boring will be less expensive based on the, based on the site conditions.
Yep.
And also, I'll answer your, our next question is about pipe materials. What we're doing is, you know, you, we can, there's a couple of different choices. We can go with the traditional cast iron is a method, but there's also pressurized PVC pipe, which is what the city uses and, and we have been using that more of a standard as well and it's less much, less cost also. So that's what we're planning on doing is a pressurized PVC piping.
Well, directional boring, I assume you have to use the PVC or can you use cast iron?
Necessarily.
I think it's just easier to install because you have, it's a little bit more flexible, whereas cast would just be, you can only put certain sections or certain lengths in the ground at a time rather than longer section of PVC.
You said there would be parallel, like the new one would be parallel to the one that's there, be put in the ground before the old one's taken out?
Yes.
How, how close would, I mean, what, what proximity are the two?
Well, you know what? That's the beauty, that's the beauty of directional boring. I mean, they have, they, they are able to determine kind of where different, where the different systems are. If you look at, if you zoom up on by the school, well, maybe either one of them, there's utilities in the area. It's kind of a, there's other, I'm not sure if it's an easement, but there's other utilities that they're going to have to deal with the whole way and they can steer that directional bore. It's, it's quite interesting how they can navigate that through. Now, is it? Now, is it, is it perfect? No, you know, they may, they may, they may wind up hitting the main, but that's, that's something that they would have to deal with and they deal with that on a daily basis. But, but yeah, so it's-
Curious.
So check it out when they start doing it.
All good questions. Do I have a motion to approve the plan specifications instead of public hearing for the Hanson Elementary Water Main Project?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the plans, specifications and form of contract and set February 26, 2018 at 5:30 PM as the date and time to hold a public hearing for the 2018 Hanson Elementary Water Main Project.
Thank you, Mr. Haskman. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Sasha. Any further questions, comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening.
I got about 10 questions more than I thought I was going to get. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Moving on for the approval of the 2016-2017 school year audit.
Well, I'm sure this is all what you waited for. First off, I want to just take a moment to thank the board for allowing me, us to reschedule this from the last board meeting. I was not able to be here for, and I really appreciate you taking the time to be able to do that. But we have Monica Hague with us from Carney Alexander and they've been the district's auditor for the past few years and we're going to walk through the audit for our last school year.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, I'm going to take your thunder.
Excuse me. I just want to remind everyone, the financial statements belong to the district. Our, our responsibility is just to express an opinion on them, on the district's financial statements in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. Also, our responsibility is to express this opinion based on our audit, which is conducted in accordance with U.S. generally accepted auditing standards and the standards applicable to financial audits contained in the governmental audit standards.
Okay. Now that we have that technicality, let's talk about revenue for, for last school year. Now what you have in front of you is a, is a pie graph showing a revenue that the district received last year. And this is for all funds. It's with the general fund, instructional support levy, whatever fund that we have, this is the total revenue that the district received. It sort of gives you an idea where our dollars are coming from. You can see approximately a third of our total revenue stream is property taxes, another third is from unrestricted grants from the state and you can kind of see the, the breakdown of the pie chart as, as you go around. This graph gives you a historical view for the last three years. You'll notice that unrestricted state grants, especially in fiscal '16 and fiscal '17 have grown a little bit. That's a combination of two things. One, that would be increases in state aid due to enrollment primarily. And also in fiscal '17, it's the inclusion of the teacher leadership compensation grant. That was about $1.6 million in and of itself. So that's why you see that particular revenue stream growing a little bit over the last three years. Expenditures for the school district for the, for the last year, again, this is for all funds across the district. Again, whether it's the general fund, the construction project funds, activity fund, whatever it might be, you can see where all the dollars have been expended over this last year. Roughly 57% of all of those dollars are directly spent towards education and that would be teacher salaries and paraeducators associated with regular and special education. And then you can see the different items across the different sections of the pie chart to show where they, all those expenditures have gone. And then this graph also does show from a historical perspective over the last three years, you can see by far instruction is the largest chunk of where all our expenditures go. That's what we do. And again, that increase between fiscal '16 and fiscal '17, the biggest piece of that is that inclusion of that teacher, teacher leadership compensation grant as we, we took the $1.6 million in and we spent the $1.6 million out. What we're going to try and show here is a statement of net position. Now these are all the governmental funds. This does not include the food service program as an example. And so you can see our total assets for the year did jump up from 126 to 161, almost on 162 million, but we have more liabilities that offsets that. Our deferred inflows and outflows are relatively steady. And so our actual net assets did drop a little bit, about, about $3 million from the previous year. Again, the sale of the $32 million of general obligation bonds is a big player in this as to why the total assets and total liability numbers are larger than what they were the previous year. Again, this is just a bar graph showing that in a little bit of a different perspective. You can see there's our drop in net fund balance comparison to the previous two years. What I'm trying to do here with this sheet is to kind of take a balance sheet that you would normally have in a regular business and kind of condense it down into one slide on a PowerPoint. But basically what we have here is you've got different columns showing our major funds, which are the general fund, debt service and the capital projects fund. Now, capital projects fund in this case means both Fund 31, where we're paying, where we're using our general obligation bonds to pay for our elementary projects, as well as Fund 33, which is our state once in sales tax dollars. It's kind of brought together for that. But you can see the big changes in this with the capital projects fund. You can see the cash of a little over 41 million. That is because we had the bond sale that took place last spring and that cash was in the bank. And as you can articulate down through, you can see in that particular column as well, there was 39.7 million of that which was restricted. And again, that would all be specifically because of what it was designated for. So our net total assets was 82.7 million in round numbers and then you can see our deferred, our liabilities of just under 9 million. Inflows that were deferred, about 27 million and that left us a fund balance total of about 46.2 million. And then that miraculously tied out. You guys did a great job with that. And then on the proprietary funds, this is our food service and the, and the coffee shop program that the kids have at the high school. And you can see those dollars right there. And of course, we're accounting for everything that we need to, to do with that as per Gatsby Governmental Accounting Standards Board. And you can see our net position from overall.
Doug, what was, what was succeeding year again on that balance sheet that you put together with all the general, it's one, it's one right before this, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Succeeding, succeeding year?
Succeeding year?
It's on the previous one, just one proposed, 20 million, 27 million in it?
This, this slide here?
Yeah, on that one, third down.
Succeeding year property taxes. It's the property taxes that are, they're not really due until July 1st.
Right.
But they have been, it's gone through the-
So it's, it's a receivable?
It's a receivable and it's also a deferred out.
It's a, it's a long-term receivable.
Right, so it shows in both places, but you have to show it because it's gone through the approval.
And, and this is one of the differences between what she does with audit and then what I do when I talk about that. I always carve those dollars out in our reports because it's really just a, it's not there yet. So we just, I just sort of take them out to show a more of a true picture. This is a true picture this way as well, it's just a little less cumbersome to show it.
Gotcha.
Let's see here. Okay, we're, I think we're at the assets page here. This has changed a little bit from last year. You can see the three-year columns as far as our, our assets are concerned. And then we have the depreciation. So our net assets were just over $79 million and that's up from about $76 million previous year. And you can, like I said, there's a three-year historical perspective as well as a percent change. Business, this would be the nutrition fund, excuse me, excuse me, the nutrition fund here on the second page in our grand total at the bottom. Debt, this is something that's a little bit different for us and this has changed from what we've had last year. You can see at the top in the second column from the right, the $32 million and then the premium for the general obligation bond sale that the district held the last spring. You can see that the bonds are payable. Now what you're seeing in that 5.5 million is the, basically the 2013 bonds that are payable. And then below that, the 19.95 is the, or excuse me, the 14.36, excuse me, that is the refinanced revenue bonds that the board sold. And so our total bonds payable are 52.8 million. And then you can walk down through the compensated expenses, the required OPEB liability and our required pension debt that we have to report. And so you can see that the total is 80, just a little over 83 million. Then add the business activities from the food service account and again, we're at about 83.6 million. The biggest chunk of that, again, from, when you look at that from the previous year is that $32 million addition because of the general obligation bonds.
And the, sorry Doug, on the, on the pension liability, so that, I know that first kind of jumped onto our balance sheet in '15 because of a recal, basically came out with a new rule and said we had to classify as if I-Pers ceased to exist.
Correct.
Even though I-Pers is not going to cease to exist. But the, the big jump, I mean, it, so it jumped quite a bit from '15 to '16 and then it jumped again to '17. Is that just actuarial tables changed? We had to use different assumptions or what?
It's all of the above, all of the above. They come out, you know, we use the I-Pers report. They come out with our audit and of course, everything is a year, is a year prior. Everything on the '17 report is for fiscal, is from I-Pers, from fiscal year '16 and '15 and '14. So it, you know, everything is, and they may use different percentages, different, different rates. So, and there's like four pages in the back of, in the disclosure about how those rates change every year. And so it's primarily the information coming from I-Pers that will change your liability. Yes, you have a, you have a percentage of it, but that's what, it, it's mostly their changes that are reflected in yours.
Right, yeah, it's a, it's definitely a science, just lots of, lots of moving. And it's, and again, just for, just for, I guess, validation, I mean, that's a, just an, those rules were written in as just an extreme, it's not, I mean, the, the chances that that liability would ever become a true, call it a true liability that we'd have to dispense cash for-
Correct.
-is extremely, extremely small.
Correct. And it's going to be on every school district, every city, every, every governmental entity is going to show this liability. So it's, I mean, if, if it comes to pass, it's everybody.
Right, right.
I'd include one more extremely in there. The, the chances of the I-Pers fund or some of these public accounts that this liability would actually be accrued, that we'd have to pay out is rare, extremely, extremely, extremely rare.
And, and I would say that, you know, I-Pers has been pretty upfront with us as I've gone to meetings about that they're continuing to tweak their formulas and how they're doing their actuarial tables. And I know that they're also working with State Auditor's Office on that sort of stuff. And so as we're getting more and more into this, I think they're fine tuning things a little bit better and I think that, hopefully in time that that'll sort of level off and we won't see these bounces like what you're seeing.
Yep.
One of the other things I want to talk about when we talk about debt is just a reminder to the board that with our revenue bond debt, we're required to keep a minimum of a 1.20 coverage. That basically means we have to have 1.2 times the amount that we have debt sold as a reserve. And you can see, this is historical over the last seven years. And you can see that our, when we sold the 9.95 million back in '14, our, our coverage ratio dropped to 1.34. But we ended last year at 1.7 and we're estimating that we're going to end fiscal '18, the current year, at over two. So that basically means we have twice the amount of cash on hand than what we would have to have for debt coverage. Now that's a good thing from, from a, when we go out for rating. That's, that's sort of the one, one thing that's really important that the bonding agents and those people look at. But it's also good to, to let the community know that we're honoring our commitments, that we're wanting, wanting to make sure that we're having that coverage in-house in the event that some calamity would happen all of a sudden, once that sales tax stream would slow down and not be as robust as it has been. So that's what that's all about. One other thing that we need to report on, starting last school year, we're required to report on the district's component unit. And that's, that would be the Cedar Falls Schools Foundation. And you can see that the foundation had $367,000 worth of additional revenue and then about $100,000 worth of expenses. So their fund balance jumped from 2.1 to just under $2.5 million last school year. And with that, I'll let Monica run through the results.
Besides the opinions, we are charged with giving you the art results. And this is mostly because of the governmental audit, that it has to be a governmental audit, that's why these are in there. The summary of independent auditor's results, the good things are unmodified opinions were issued on the financial statements. The audit did not disclose any significant deficiencies in internal control over the financial statements. The audit did not disclose any non-compliance, which is material to the financial statements. As far as the federal audit portion, the audit did not disclose any significant deficiencies in internal control over the major programs. And an unmodified opinion was issued on the compliance with requirements with each major program. There's a little bit of discussion on the major programs this year, we're Title I and Special Education. We do a calculation between type A and type B programs. The threshold was 750,000. That's used to determine the major programs. It's quite a calculation, like three-step calculation, but, and Cedar Falls did qualify as a low-risk auditee. That means we do, our percentage of testing is a little bit lower because of the fact that it's a low-risk auditee. For the financial statements, non-compliance, there were no instances noted, internal control deficiencies, no matters were noted. As far as the federal awards, no findings in question costs of non-compliance were noted, no matters were noted of internal control deficiencies. And then there's the required statutory compliance for the state, state of Iowa. And I know last year we had one on the certified budget that was taken care of last year. The expenditures did not exceed the amended budget this year. And then there's several items about expenses, no disbursements that did not meet the requirements of public purpose. We look at the travel expenses, we look at the business transactions, no issues were And then there's specific things that we need to do for the Iowa Department of Education and the basic enrollment data. There were no, no variances noted there, nor with the supplemental waiting. And your certified annual report was filed timely with no deficiencies, no deficiencies in amounts reported or categorical funding issues. And that was it. There were a couple of things I was, that we didn't actually put in here. There were some additional footnote disclosures, basically tax abatements is a new disclosure this year. We get that information from the city and the county and the state. And then that's just disclosed in your financial statements. Also, just for fiscal year '18 next year, there's going to be some additional disclosures for OPEB, other post-employment benefits. They are changing that again too, so.
Yes, my office is really looking forward to working with our actuarials on that report. I need to take a minute here to thank Monica and her staff. They just do an outstanding job for us and they're always willing to let us visit with them during, during the year if we have any questions and we do contact them. I think Danil maybe has her own speed dial, I'm not quite sure, but we do talk to them quite a bit and they're very generous and very gracious. And I need to thank my staff and you can see everybody on the screen who's a part of the staff. And then also Pam, who works with Title I, specifically Carrie, who does the special ed and Jill White, who does all our Medicaid work. All those ladies, if it wouldn't be for them, we wouldn't be able to pull this audit together and have it be the report that we have. And I'm very proud of all the work that they do and we can entertain any questions that the board would have on our audit.
Any questions for Doug or Monica? You both are too humble. You are both very professional about your report. Doug, you have an amazing office and with your leadership and guidance, we feel fortunate in this district to have you at the helm. But we also know that sometimes leadership, it's the people on the ship that drive it and we know that you couldn't do it without them. So from the bottom of our heart, make sure that you let them know that we appreciate what they do each and every day for us.
I will do that, thank you very much.
Can I take it one step further too? And not only it is the work that you guys do, it's that ethical framework that you utilize in the transparency. I was amazed by the number of districts that don't do the financial reports or the updates and just the communication across to all- and just communication across to all stakeholders. And again, it's that, that transparency and that ethical framework, so thank you.
Do I have a, I need a motion to approve this two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year audit.
So moved.
It's been moved by Suzie.
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Hasman. All in favor, any questions or comments? All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're moving on to Doug, again, to the district financial report.
Okay, I think I'm hooked up here, and if we want to pull the other PowerPoint up, this will sort of tie a little bit more into what, what we just went through with Monica. And here's where I'm looking over. And talk a little bit about school finance and some of the rules that we have to, to live with, and, and just to kind of give you a piece of where we're at. We'll start off by basics, again, just to remind everybody that there are two different ways of doing things with, with finance and, and public education and other public entities across the state. City-county government runs under what's called home rule, and they basically have the authority to take action as long as there isn't a study of state or federal law that says they can't. And school districts and AEA's and community colleges run, operate under Dillon's rule, which basically says you can't do anything unless we tell you you can, in real simple terms. Last year, the legislature did pass a House File two seventy-three that really only provided us a little bit of wiggle room. It's maybe not quite as encompassing as, as it once thought for full home rule status for public school districts, but it, it has provided us a little bit of leeway on some, some issues. Real quick, here are the funds that the, the school district operates with, and you can, we've talked about those many times, but just as a reminder of what those all are. The goals and principles of Iowa School Foundation Formula, this is primarily the general fund, and you can see those different bullet points, but the, the main bullet point here is establishing maximum spending control. The formula drives everything. It's an enrollment-based formula, and it, it establishes the dollars we receive and the dollars we can spend. And it's the same formula for all K-12 public school districts across the state. For, the four key factors associated with the Iowa School Foundation Formula, of course, like I said, is enrollment, that's number one. Equalization, that's that cost per pupil, that's, that is nearly equal across the state. And what, what I've done here is I tried to show you what that, what the version of nearly equal means. It's a little hard to see, but the majority of school districts in the state are approximately one-hundred-and-sixty-two districts. For last year, received sixty-five-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars per pupil. Cedar Falls is slightly better than that, whereas we were at sixty-five-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars per pupil. But you can see that there was one-hundred-and-seventy-two school districts that received more than the sixty-five-ninety-eight, and there are a few districts that are all the way up to sixty-seven-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars per pupil. So that's nearly equal. Now, I think that figures out to somewhere in the neighborhood of about a three percent spread, high to low. Don't hold me to that number, but I believe that's pretty close. So that kind of gives you a general idea of where that's at, and then I, then I tried to show it from a little bit of a different angle, and you can see the difference, high to low, from that perspective.
And Doug, they're getting their funding, because the formula's pretty rigid, so what, how are they able to?
That was established when the school funding formula came into place in the seventies.
Right.
And they, there was, that was established at that time, the, the legislation at that time set a base amount, and that was, that's the low number, and then if other school districts were contributing at a higher rate, they got to basically keep that number at that time, and then it's just sort of grown from there.
So it's historical?
Yeah, and they were grandfathered in. So in nineteen seventy, whatever year, if a district was above that threshold that the state spent, it was a compromise, and they said that district will be able to keep that certain percentage above what the district minimum was. In Cedar Falls, you can see, we just had a very small increase above what that state minimum was, and that ratio has maintained for the last forty-plus years.
Now, one of the things that the state does, when they, when they set allowable growth or supplemental state aid for next year, that's, amount is a percentage of the base number. So you don't take the school district that's way up at the top times one percent, it's the times the bottom number. So they actually slowly creep down, but it, it's a very, very slow creep, for lack of a better way to say it.
Yep.
The other factors that, that are associated with the funding formula is supplemental state aid growth, and we've talked about that recently, and obviously, the governor and the legislature set that. And the state foundation formula sets the expenditure ceiling for each school district's total spending authority, and it basically tells the school district how to fund it. And we'll, we've talked about that when we do budget, and when we go through the budget presentation next month, we'll, we'll go through it again. But that predetermined formula that sets the property tax rate and, and the state aid amount, and, and, and all the, all the dollars that flow into that. And then the other part of Iowa school funding is the spending authority, which is a basic way, best way that I've ever come up with to describe spending authority, is, it's similar to a credit card limit, on a credit card that you would have. The limit that you might have on your credit card doesn't necessarily mean you have that check, that cash in your checking account, but it is what you can spend, because, you know, you have that authority. And that spending authority is a calculation, it doesn't generate its own cash, and then any unused authority rolls over to the next year. And, and in Cedar Falls case, this is basically, well, in every, excuse me, in every case across the state, this is basically the, the formula for your special educator, your spending authority calculation. And you can see there's a few things that we get to add, like the SBRC applications that we do on an annual basis. The miscellaneous income, I'll talk about that for a minute, that's basically any income, examples of miscellaneous income in our school district would be open enrollment tuition, special education tuition, dollars that parents would pay for textbook fees, money that we receive from parking wreck and other people for renting our facilities, those sorts of things, that's all considered miscellaneous income. There are some, any federal dollars are considered miscellaneous income, so that two-point-two million that we receive in federal dollars is considered miscellaneous. And other, there are some very, very few state grants that are considered miscellaneous. And then, then you add that all up, you subtract off your expenditures, and that leaves you your balance. This is Cedar Falls unspent authority worksheet for the last four years, and so you can sort of see, there's a, a more visual purpose to see where the dollars are coming from. The one-point-six-seven million on the right, I just wanted to show the board that that was our TLC grant for year one. The state considered that a miscellaneous income grant for the first year. So that's why it's located down toward the bottom. I believe that's on line thirty. And then, but next year, it flows up to line eight as it's considered part of the funding formula. So that's what that arrow is trying to show, so that's, when you see what our miscellaneous income bounced up, well, that's basically the TLC grant is why it jumped up. And then the last part of its balance, and that's where we talked about how we're to fund the dollars. School districts, every school district in the state has to come up with the first five dollars and forty cents per thousand. The state funds up to the eighty-seven and a half percent level, and then we have supplemental state aid on top of that, that covers the increase in something between year to year. So that, whatever the legislature sets for supplemental state aid for next year, historically, they have covered the property tax portion of that for the last three or four years. And so that, there's not, it, it sort of holds the local school districts harmless as far as from a property tax perspective. And then the additional levy is what is, is property tax, which goes on top to come up, so you can get to that combined district cost total. This basically shows where we were at for last year. You can see rough, just under sixty-three percent of our cost per pupil was funded through state aid or that supplemental state aid replacement amount. And the general fund, as a reminder, excuse me, let me say it this way, all the other funds in the district are restricted or their specific purpose, and they cannot be used to support the general fund. And so general fund sort of stands on its own, and then all the other funds stand on their own as well. So what we're going to do is we're going to kind of go through revenue and expenditures, some fund balance, and some financial indicators for the general fund, and then we'll go through some revenue and expenditure and fund balances for the other funds as well. The Iowa Association of School Boards has developed some financial indicators, and we've talked about them. We sort of went through these back in October when we went through, across the CAR, and you can see that those five major financial indicators, they have others, but these are the five that we, we talk about all the time. And as we walk through them, you'll, we'll, we'll explain the differences between what happened in the previous years. Enrollment, our enrollment for fiscal seventeen continued to climb, although our October enrollment in, of this year, we dropped a little bit. We were down, certified enrollment, we were down about twenty students in round numbers. So that sort of shows that. Here is enrollment change, I thought the board might like to see this, this is a little bit different. Cedar Falls is the eighteenth largest or fastest-growing school district in the state of Iowa over the last ten years. We have grown it right at a twenty percent clip over the last ten years. You can about imagine, it's the Waukes and the Ankenys of the world that are on the far left, and, but you can also look at some of the school districts to the far right that have been dropping in that greater than thirty percent range over the last ten years. So we're pretty fortunate in Cedar Falls, from a growth perspective, as to how, how the district's continuing to grow and, and, and do its thing. Enrollment projections, this sort of tracks what RSP has done for us and where we actually have been, and you can see that that's been running pretty steady and pretty accurate since we started that. General fund, fund balance, as you can see that that, again, we, we talked about this last fall, our fund balance really has hardly changed from fiscal sixteen to fiscal seventeen, although our net, our, excuse me, our total assets hardly changed, our net fund balance changed. And that difference is, that's the payables that we would owe for salary and benefits and other things, that's why that dipped from the five-point-four-eight to four-point-eight-eight. Revenue, closed the gap a little bit, we almost, revenue almost matched expenditures for last year, so we've been able to shrink that up a little bit. Again, that, a big jump in that one-point-six million of that was for the TLC grant, and again, that's a, that's going to have a little bit of a play as to why you see that jump from the previous year. ISL, I like to show the board instructional support levy as a separate, and you can see the revenue and expenditures associated with that. The buildings do have the authority to hold back some dollars and carry dollars over. That does have a bit, a bit of a play as to why you see the drop in expenditures from the previous year.
If you can go back one slide, I think it's important to note as well, where with a growing enrollment, your revenues are based on the previous year's certified enrollment, and, and your expenditures typically are going to be serving the students that are already sitting in the seats that might have, not have been counted the previous year. So what happens is your revenue comes in, it's always going to be a year and a rears from what you're spending on those students sitting in your seats.
Yeah, that's a correct statement, because you're looking at cash, you're not looking at authority. There's a difference.
So for seventeen, eighteen, we should come in more stable, because our enrollment is more or less stable this year versus last.
That should be a true statement.
Yes.
Yeah.
Depending on other expenditures and costs and things like that, but yes, generally, that should be a hundred percent accurate.
General fund revenue, this just tries to break down to show you where the dollars have come from. Last year, we had eighteen-point-six million in property taxes, about three-point-seven in local other, that's that tuition dollars and those sorts of things. There's, you can see the state amount and the federal amount on the top. This shows the same total dollars, but in percentage. So roughly one-third of the total dollars received in the general fund were property taxes, and you can see where the rest of it come from.
Could you go back to that previous one? So in the local other, we, we, our trend there is from seven million to five million to three-point-five-eight.
You, you have to remember that in fiscal, in the year twelve thirteen through fourteen-fifteen, we were flowing River Hills through the general fund. Until we received a directive from Department of Ed to switch that. So in twelve thirteen and thirteen fourteen, that roughly three and a half million dollars that was directly attributed to the River Hills consortium was run through the general fund. In fourteen fifteen, we did a half a year, and so for fifteen sixteen and sixteen seventeen, that's all flushed out, and that's in Fund Ninety-four now.
Got you.
And so that, if you go, if you go all the way back and look at eleven twelve, and then tie it back to the last two school years, that's more of a steady trend. That's the little bump in, in there of that. Solvency ratio, and we talked about this last fall, and the solvency ratio, again, just as a reminder, is taking our assigned and unassigned fund balance divided by our general fund revenue. And that's continuing to drop, that basically is one way of saying is that we have less cash in the bank than what we did the previous year. And if you go back to some of the other information we showed you earlier, those bar graphs showed you the same thing as well. Now, we're working on correcting that this year, because the board did approve an increase in our cash reserve levy for this current school year to build more cash, to build that fund, that cash balance back up. And this shows us a history of our budget authority. I'm going to say that the administration in this district and the board has done a fantastic job. You look at the last three school years, our change in authority has been a hundred thousand dollars in three years. That's about as steady as it gets when you're looking at fifty-two to fifty-five million dollars in expenditures every year. That's about as steady as it gets. And that's, that's kudos to everybody sitting at this table, and everybody across the district, and how they're working together to try and keep that stable. And one of the things that, the other point to note, the red bar is actually the unassigned, unrestricted, we always have some categorical dollars that we have to account for, and you'll note that that's actually creeped up, and that, what that's meaning is we're spending our categoricals appropriately, and we're keeping those fund balances down where they need to be. One of the things that the Department of Ed is, is putting an emphasis on is they really want to know that difference in school districts between their total spending authority and their unassigned unrestricted, because there are certain cases where school districts, if you threw out the categoricals that they're holding in, holding back, they may actually have a negative authority. They're, they're living on their categoricals, is another way to put it. So this line graph shows, basically shows the same thing. Now, you might say, well, you've been real steady the last three years, and we have, so, but why did we drop off a percentage point? It's called TLC, and that's one-point-six million dollars. We took one-point-six million dollars in, we spent one-point-six million dollars, that goes into the calculation, and that's why the percentage dropped. If that would not have been in there, we'd have been pretty flat again. So that's why you see that. There's our ratio showing against expenditures for each year. You can see we've been amazingly steady the last couple of years, like we talked about before. Our net fund balance, this is a percentage of our unspent authority against our ability to finance it, and again, this goes back to cash, what we have on hand, and that's why we've, for this current year, we've increased our cash reserve levy to try and pull that back up a little bit. Days net cash ratio, this is another way of showing what we have for cash on hand. You can see that that's been dropping off the last few years, again, that should improve itself at the end of fiscal eighteen with that cash reserve change. There is net fund balance, again, as our cash drops, it all shows what we have for cash available, and again, we're working on solving that problem. Another ratio that school districts really need to watch is their salary and benefits ratio, and ours is slowly creeping up a little bit. That's something that the administration's aware of, and, and we're looking at that. But as we, as we, we're in a situation where we're having additional staff, additional students coming into the district, we're having to add additional staff, and then those dollars come on the backside, and so that's one of the reasons why this is ticking up a little bit as well. A big thing that A big thing that drives tax rate and what we ask our citizens to compensate us for from property tax perspective is assessed valuation. This line graph shows us the history of assessed valuation within the Cedar Falls school district over the last ten years and you can see we've been in a pretty fortunate place. The red line talks about, that's total valuation including the TIF and the blue line which drives the general fund. We're using the blue line and that's what we figure the tax rate on for the general fund, that's without the TIF. Where you can see that we had a ten percent jump between fiscal seventeen and fiscal eighteen for valuation. Now, a big part of that is there were some dollars that rolled off the TIF and then they rolled off the TIF, then they dropped down into the blue line and so that's why we had that jump. And on the far right, you can kind of see where we're going to be for fiscal nineteen. So it's continuing to grow and that's a testament to this community and a testament to the leadership in this community and all the wise individuals that sat at this chamber over the past decades and the decisions that they've made for economic development in this community. What we're going to show here real quick is this is a historical perspective of what this, combined district cost and how much of this has been state aid versus property tax and you can see that especially over the last four years, the amount of state aid the district's been receiving has slowly been creeping up every year and the amount of property tax asking has been slowly decreasing over the past four years. One of the things that the board has always asked for is to try and, how do we compare ourselves? And I know that we have to sort of limit this to only Iowa schools, but every other state has a different funding formula and it would be fair to compare us to another state. But you can see when you compare us against all Iowa schools, you know, we're the sixteenth largest school district in the state. Our solvency ratio, we're about two hundred and fifty-six so we're not maybe as, from a solvency perspective, we're not maybe where we need to be as far as average is concerned. We're not bad, it's just that we're not, we're not maybe as high or as average as some. Unspent budget authority, you know, we're ranked two hundred and fourteenth, we have seventeen hundred dollars per student. I want to take a moment here to note that there are some school districts, most of them are very small, that are going to be in that higher twenty-three thousand dollar range or whatever that is. Basically what that's saying is, now remember, we get about six to six hundred dollars per student. So what that's saying is that particular school district has four times the authority to educate that student. And so the question that maybe I would ask is, why are you sitting on so much? I think it's a fair question, but I don't, but I, but most of those school districts are, like I said, pretty small in size and they have other things that they're dealing with. And you can see the evaluations and everything across the bottom as far as where we sit, we're kind of in the middle or towards the head of that. And then the second graph talks about just the twenty-five largest school districts in the state and I would, I would just show the board, especially on the bottom, our assessed valuation is a little bit better than most of the top twenty-five. Our tax rate is, we're the second lowest general fund tax rate and we had the lowest total tax rate in fiscal seventeen of the largest twenty-five school districts throughout the state.
Now, that's before the...
That is before the bond and we're going to talk about that here in a minute. So I anticipated that.
Can I just ask for clarification on the solvency ratio? I mean, I understand that it's based on an average, but why are we coming in on the, in the red there?
Well, what that, what that is showing is basically it's taking, it's dividing every school district by thirds and it's trying to place us to kind of give you a graphical indication of where we are.
Okay.
It's because it says that maybe I need to change that to not red, maybe I need to change it to the blue.
It's alarming.
But it, you know, what you don't want to do is you don't want to be down there to where you're at zero or negative because if we get negative, that would not be pleasant.
Right.
You saw our solvency ratio was right around seven five, seven six. The ISAB would say five percent or above is where you need to be at. It's based on your cash balances and last March, the board made the decision to move forward with our recommendation to increase our cash reserve levies so we could recoup some of the cash that we've spent to lower down some of those levy rates. So it was a one-time expenditure to generate more of the cash so our solvency ratio now can go back upwards towards that balance where we want it to be, roughly eight, nine, ten percent.
Okay, good, thank you. That helps.
I'm going to turn it to the right screen here. What we're showing here is a historical perspective, our general fund tax rate, Cedar Falls is in the red bars, the largest twenty-five school districts in the state, their average, that average tax rate is in the gray and then the gold on the right would be state, overall state average and you can see that we've been pretty consistent being right at state average. So, and then now to Mr. Haseman's question about with the bond, this is total tax rate and you can see that yes, our total tax rate for fiscal eighteen is a little bit more than the state average, but that white bar that you see in there shows what it would have been if we had sold the thirty-two million dollar bond. So we would have been under that again. So that sort of gives you an idea of where we're at from that. Here's assessed valuation per student. Again, the state average is, there are some school districts that have some unbelievable assessed valuations per student and that's a combination of the folks up around Spirit Lake, Okoboji is a classic example, they have a very high assessed valuation, very low student population, so you bang those two together and their assessed valuation per kid is pretty high. One of the things that, ours has been relatively steady the last three years, going back to two thousand fourteen, that was a blip where we had a whole bunch of TIF roll off and then TIF came, then we gained it and lost it over the course of two years. And so that's why you see that blip in two thousand fourteen, but it kind of gives you an idea where we're at when you compare us to the largest twenty-five in state average. Supplemental state aid for next year, this is a historical graph again, showing where we've been. We don't know where we're going to be for next year. This is based on the governor's recommendation. We do know that Cedar Falls more than likely will be at one percent unless something very unusual happens. So that sort of takes care of the general fund. Now we'll kind of whip through the other funds here real quick and just as a quick reminder that they're all restricted funds and they are, can only be used as the laws and regulations by the Code of Iowa establish that. Management fund, there you can see what it's used for. We primarily use it for our insurance other than employee insurance benefits and you can see that that's been incredibly steady the last few years from revenue and expenditure perspective. We've been kind of pulling back those cash balances slightly and then you can see that that's worked very well for us. The one cent local option sales tax, or formerly the one cent local option sales tax, statewide sales tax, you can see what we're using that for. I added a little information this year, this is a historical perspective of since inception when the one cent started in two thousand and you can see where the total dollars received and I broke it down into different categories to kind of give you an idea where all the dollars have gone. I just basically cut and paste that right out of my tracking spreadsheet that I have. This shows us, and you saw this last fall, shows us where we're at. I'll remind the board that the, that seven point one nine is the actual net that we had because we have to set that nine hundred and ninety-five thousand aside for the reserve for the one bond. A history of expenses, I don't know if the board has seen this for a while, but this sort of shows since two thousand in a pie graph as a percentage where all the dollars have gone throughout the district for different projects that we used either a local option or statewide one cent sales tax dollars for. So they're kind of, you can kind of see how those dollars have been spread apart. This shows our projected future balances. This report happens to be on a cash basis, not an accrual. We were at eight point oh two million in December of two thousand seventeen. That'll tick up a little bit when we get to June and then it'll start to fall off pretty rapidly over the course of the next year, a year and a half as we run out of the general obligation bonds, we'll have expended those and then we're going to the dollars we've built up in the statewide one cent sales tax pool to help fund those three projects we've got going on. We anticipate that we're going to have about a net of about one point three million left when those projects are completed and then we'll start, because we don't have anything booked against that for the future other than bond sales, then that'll start, that balance will start to grow again.
When you create this, you assume for all these projections that the amount of saved money we get in doesn't change.
That's correct.
And you, and I appreciate your conservatism on that, but if you go one slide back, I mean, there are times that it dips, oh, I'm sorry, you have to go one back before that.
Yeah, I know, that one.
That one. When you look at, so the third column over, there certainly are years where it dips when obviously you say there's a recession in two thousand seven, it dips, but it does generally increase, so.
Right. And if you look in two thousand eleven, that is the year that it switched from local to statewide. And so we took, we knew we were going to take a dip when that happened and then it started to build again. Yes, I'm sorry, excuse me, but I take a pretty conservative approach to revenue as it comes in throughout the district and if, one of the things we don't do with this is I do not calculate what's called the reconciliation payment or that thirteenth payment. If you remember in December, we talked about that. I take it, I take it a pretty conservative approach to all of that.
So let me state this another way, this is a worst-case scenario.
Hopefully this is worst-case scenario.
Gotcha.
And I think what's good about this as well is it shows potential dollars that we could invest or utilize to focus on some of the facility needs that we will have and do have now and into the future, namely high school. So some of these dollars can be leveraged to help with that future project as well.
Right.
And you'll notice on the far right, the two lines join together into one, that's the year that we make the final payment on the, on the nine point nine five million dollar revenue bond and then we don't have to hold a reserve anymore because the refinancing bond was a private placement and there's no reserve for that. This shows you our revenue bond debt to kind of give you an idea where that's at. The red bar again is the two thousand thirteen nine point nine five, we sold it two point three seven five percent and the refi amount is in the gray and that where we sold those bonds at two point one percent. So you can kind of see where that, that's at. The, actually, the nine point nine five is callable after June first, but I didn't check the rates today, but I would be willing to bet it'd be hard to place to get a better rate than what we're getting.
So based on this, we have, we have some capacity, albeit a little bit, starting in twenty, like we could issue a bond from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-nine. It's not going to be a lot, but...
And if they do a twenty-year extension to the statewide one cent sales tax, then, then we will have a lot more.
Right. Then it's a, then it's a holding story.
Correct.
This is the, this is the status quo today.
This is status quo assuming that the sunset at June thirty twenty twenty-nine still holds.
Yep.
Physical plant and equipment levy, we'll go through that quick. You can see what we can use it for and how the, how the revenue comes up for that. There's our fund balances, total assets and our fund balance, our net. That number will drop a little bit here for fiscal eighteen, but we got a pretty long list of projects we're working on over this last year, but as you can, that kind of gives you a historical perspective where those dollars have come from. Debt service levy and you can see that that's a voter-approved event except for the revenue bonds, which we have to transfer from Fund thirty-three to Fund forty to pay a amount of Fund forty. It's a, it's an accounting thing. Debt service levy basically is zero because what we put in, we take out historically, so that's always been a zero. I wanted to show you, this is our outstanding general obligation bond debt. We sold the thirty-two million dollars last, in the spring of seventeen. One thing I just want to remind the board of is even though we spoiled them in the spring of seventeen, it's a twenty-year bond that we're paying off in nineteen years. And so we're saving a whole year's worth of interest for the community by doing that and those bonds were sold at three point oh eight if I remember right. Yeah. Real quickly, the activity fund, that's where student events take place and then you can see the fund balances there. Nutrition fund, of course, this is our business fund and that's for the food service program as well as the coffee shop at the high school and then you can see the fund balances there. What we're showing on the far right is, the dark line indicates now that we have to report pension liability, the dash line shows what it would have been without the pension liability. And then in, to summarize some things, our cash balance decreased a little bit from the previous year. Our net days cash ratio dropped and we've talked about cash and all of that. Our unspent budget authority decreased by seventy-five thousand, but like I said, it's been a hundred thousand over three years, so it's been really pretty minor. Unspent budget authority will decrease in fiscal on eighteen and nineteen with the opening of Aldridge. We know that, we've been planning for that. We're going to be applying to the School Budget Review Committee for staffing and supply costs. That'll help offset some of that reduction. And again, increases in enrollment without increases in supplemental state aid put more and more pressure on the general fund and that's ever so true this year as it is in any other year. Special education, we still need to do what we need to do. We took in just short of a million dollars last year through Medicaid, which is Jill White and her team, can't thank them enough. Our deficit last year was about nine hundred and seventy-two thousand and we're anticipating about an eight hundred and forty-three thousand dollar deficit for this current year. And so we continue to monitor our budgets and our funding changes in order to make those positive decisions we need to make and keep the district in a positive condition. And again, I cannot do this without my staff and I have to thank them again for everything that they do. And I entertain any questions the board would have and thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Doug. Great job. Questions for Doug?
I know you, I know your crystal ball is really fuzzy, but you showed a graph of the community's property tax base is growing. So, and so we can spread those payments over a greater number of properties and that are valued higher. So all things being equal, to service that bond, people, in the next year, people's property taxes, the school portion of it should go down because our property tax base is increasing, all things being equal.
You're specifically talking about the general obligation bond, that would be a true statement.
Right.
There are too many other variables with other stuff yet.
Right.
And we're, we're already working on the preliminary budget for next year and it does look like that the, from the general obligation bond debt service levy will drop for next year compared to this year. And that's a testament to the growth of the assessed valuation in the community.
And I get the monthly updates from the city as well. That shows what are the number of permits issued, what is the growth for the month as well as for the fiscal year. It looks like we're going to continue to have outstanding growth here across our community. So I don't think that's going to subside anytime in the future and that's again, testament to our, our city leaders and certainly our entire community.
So as we're looking forward to, you know, assuming that the save sunset gets pushed out and so that provides a funding source for the high school and as, but as our tax base continues to grow, that when that time comes that we need to ask our community, there's going, it means it's going to be shared even broader.
Broader.
Because we have more property that we can spread it across.
Correct.
Exactly. So the, the impact individually will be spread across a much greater width of property owners and we know that it's going to be, it's going to decline over time, just as we said with this bond. Would start out at a certain rate every year and continue to decrease and the impact for an individual would be a lot less over time.
Excellent. Okay.
Any other questions? Great report, Doug. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on now to item J on the agenda to set a public hearing for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year calendar. Dr. Patte.
Yes, and we did not put together a slide for this, but it's a pretty straightforward calendar request and by Iowa code, we have to ask for a public hearing and have an opportunity for our public to comment regarding the proposed calendar for the upcoming school year. Really, one of the main reasons that we didn't put a slide together, it's exactly the same calendar as it is this year. When the Iowa legislature decided two years ago that they were going to kind of dictate exactly when the start date... exactly when the start dates would be, the school districts are fairly well confined as far as when we can start and what that start date looks like. By Iowa code, we cannot start prior to August 23rd. The corresponding date from when we started this year to when we are proposing we start this upcoming school year is August 23rd and that would be that Thursday. You can see within a calendar framework, the other dates that we have within our calendar as far as professional development dates, the breaks that are the logical breaks that we have throughout the year are again, corresponding dates. The one caveat that I would point out and it's, it's the corresponding date is spring break. Spring break, we always follow UNI's calendar and we do that intentionally because we have a lot of families that work back and forth and students that are in our school system from employees at UNI or potential students at UNI. They always have spring break on the 11th Monday of the calendar year. So what happens is you see that the first Monday is the 7th, so it pushes spring break to that third full week of March. Typically, we see that in the second full week of March, so it's going to be that third week in March. I just wanted to make sure we pointed that out, but again, that's the corresponding date, the corresponding week of spring break as it is in our current calendar, but aligns with UNI's calendar, which we always work with and communicate with them extremely well. So again, it's the corresponding dates as this year calendar. It's a pretty straightforward approach. We know that the last school day pending inclement weather days will be May 29th and certainly additional inclement weather days would be added on to the, to the school year.
So if anybody wants to see this, is this, do we have this on the website?
Not yet, but we will. We'll, we'll get that up there. Yep. Anyway, it was sent out with a board packet, so you can get through it to the website that way, but we'll make sure it's on the slash page, front page of our school website so everybody can see it. We are starting to get some more inquiries about when we would start and what specific dates we're off next year. We want to make sure we communicate that out as thoroughly as we can.
And just a reminder, that's 180 student contact days, is that correct? And 192 or 193 for our, most of our certified staff?
It's 187 for our certified staff. Student contact days are 179 because we always have a date that we, or we, per Iowa code that we utilize for our parent teacher conference days. So yes, 100, it's the same as it's always been, 179 student contact days. I'm looking at Dan and Pam for confirmation. 187 contract days for staff. And they both nodded yes, so that's right.
Do I have a motion to set a public hearing for the 2018-2019 school year calendar?
So moved?
I moved that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve February 26, 2018 at 5:30 PM as the date and time to hold a public hearing for the 2018-2019 school calendar.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jeff Haseman. Any questions or comments?
Can I have a, not completely directed to that, but inclement weather affecting this year? Do we have any words?
Yes. We've had, well, first and foremost, I would say inclement weather is always, we always make those decisions based on student safety. That's our first priority. Trying to balance as well, you know, the need to have students in school and the fact that sometimes they, we have some students that won't have a meal unless we have schools. So we always try to balance the student safety as well as the need to have students in school educationally. We do have two inclement weather days so far. The last day of school, I believe right now, is scheduled for May 30th. I'd have to go back and double check that. I don't have that in front of me. But the, it's two days added on so far from what the end of the calendar was that we set last spring. Knock on wood. Hopefully, we won't have any more inclement weather days, but it's Iowa.
And our high school seniors will not have to make that up? Is that correct?
That is correct. Iowa code talks that once graduation is set, that is the date for graduation, and our graduation date has been set, obviously, so those students, seniors do not make up those days lost.
And they're hoping for more, so our seniors are.
We will get emails, yes, if it drops below a certain range. Correct.
All right. All in favor of setting the public hearing for the calendar, 2018 through 2019 calendar? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on now to K on the agenda, the superintendent's report.
Yeah, just a couple different items. Aldrich Elementary, I think you might have seen, there's been some either articles in the newspaper or items on the news media. We've given some tours to individuals within the media. I know board members had some tours. We're looking forward to giving some community members, staff members, students tours over the course of the next several months as it warms up. It's certainly going to be a beautiful structure that Cedar Falls will be proud of for certainly decades to come. February 26 meeting, obviously, we have several different public hearings. We also have the informational report of science and we'll have a closed session for the mid-year evaluation, the superintendent. March 7th, we are hoping to have a special meeting for the furniture that we just set the public hearing for and heard the presentation on. The hope would be we could do that sometime in the afternoon, but I was hoping we could look at potential dates so we could get that advertised. I don't anticipate that being a lengthy meeting. Kids should come back in where we anticipate and will have. So the, the hope would be sometime, you know, late afternoon, we can set a meeting. We'll work potentially with this location to see if we can have just a brief time where it can either be shown live or taped. But is there any times that work for members of the board to pull together that afternoon? Spring break kind of throws us for a tizzy, especially with only one meeting in, in March and the timing of this dictates to, to hold a special meeting.
I'm available anytime after 2:30.
I'm open.
Yep, me too. That was the 7th, which is a Wednesday?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah. Anytime.
If that can be worked. Yep.
Jeff?
I would have checked, but I think I'd probably make that work.
Well, is there a better time for you?
After 3:30 would be better for me if we could do that.
Can I see at least a nod?
Yep. You want to do four?
It would be even better.
Give yourself a little bit of cushion.
Is that all right?
We'll have to check with Denny to see if the room is down.
Yep.
Okay, we'll have to check with Denny to see, but if, but if it is, let's do that.
Good.
Perfect. Thank you. And then at the March 26 meeting, just looking ahead, we'll, we'll have a discussion with the preliminary budget and look at some of those numbers. As we talked about earlier, we do know that last year we did have that bump and increase within our cash reserve levy and that was intentional to be able to increase our cash reserves as we look forward. The hope is that that is, is going to be lower and lessening. So we'll have that discussion and focus on the preliminary budget. So again, this is a busy time of year, a lot of activities going on, a lot of work going on and certainly we just want to thank everybody for their involvement and engagement within our, our school system.
Any questions for Dr. Patte regarding the superintendent's report?
One comment, I would say appreciated your letter to the editor here recently along with the Waterloo and Waverly Shaw Rock superintendents. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Great colleagues regionally and certainly across the state that advocate for public education and similar to what the school board did a couple weeks ago, it's certainly something that we wanted to bring awareness to and attention to. So thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
I just wanted to ask, we did have two speakers tonight, you know, talking about this again and are we at a point now, now that this has been introduced in both chambers of the legislature, that we can have any kind of, you know, calculations about potential impact on our district? Is there any kind of range or, or not yet?
That is so hard of a question and I wish we knew and, and you know, there's two different bills that are submitted that are in the, kind of the works at the legislative level. Funnel week is this week, so we'll have a little bit more clarity what comes through funnel. The, the most recent bill that was submitted on Thursday of last week really focuses in on kindergartners or students that are currently involved or enrolled in the public school system. It's so difficult unless we do some massive surveys out to people what the interest level is or what that could mean for our district. I would be, you know, challenged to think that that is going to be a large number because of the educational quality of what we provide and certainly I think the partnership we have with parents, but that's such a hard number to pinpoint, not knowing the individual interest levels or maybe motivations for some of our parents or community members.
And I understand it right, in the, the House version that was just submitted, that excludes homeschool as an option, right? Did I?
Well, interestingly, the language says or competent private instruction. So there is still a component and competent private instruction is homeschooling. So I think one of the components that was, I hate to say communicated or produced, was that it would not impact homeschool students, but the direct language includes competent private instruction, which is homeschooled.
Was that the Senate version of the bill? I think had the competent private instruction.
My understanding, reading the House version, that did as well. So yes, but it did not include independent private instruction, which is those families that choose to homeschool that have no connectivity or accountability as far as testing or other assessment components.
If I, just to, if I remember correctly, from discussions we've had in the past, there's, there's a chance that this could actually positively impact Cedar Falls School District because we might be a desirable quote-unquote school district in the region for people, for people to want to come to, I believe, right? But we understand, I just want to be clear about that, that that would be at the expense of some other school district and we, we take the broad view that that's not good for public education as a whole, even if we happen to benefit as a district in some way, right?
Yes, we could be, you know, a beneficiary as I believe we would be considered a school of choice for a lot of families and if that is something where there's some balancing and some, some components within the vouchers and in other aspects, that would be an interesting discussion and dialogue as we look at, do we have room within our buildings? Do we have space? How do we balance that with our, our students that are resident students versus those that may wish to come here from, from outside areas and something I think we've tried to take a balanced approach for, for, for multiple years.
Well, and those outside students, they may bring with them the state allocation dollars, but they don't bring with them their PEPAL dollars. And, and so we're at a, we're at a disadvantage from a facility standpoint because they, they don't bring those. I mean, it's good from a, from a general fund standpoint. Absolutely, that's a, that's a, that's a plus we cannot deny, but when it comes time to add a new classroom, those PEPAL dollars are, don't follow those students.
I think the, the most important aspect of this is we really are focused on, you know, providing excellence in education with what we do, but then looking at, again, our advocacy as, as public education and public dollars. Everybody has choice and opportunities as far as what they believe is the best opportunity for them and their, their family and their children. But I think the role that we see as far as public dollars going towards public education, we need to keep that intact.
Any other questions for Andy? Any questions, comments, or concerns from board members that we have not already heard? At the conclusion of this meeting, there'll be a negotiation strategy session, so once we adjourn, we'll clear the room and move back to the room behind us. Do I have a motion to go in, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved by Susie. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Eric. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.